Good morning, everyone. The time is 8:42. We will now begin our council meeting with a roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brantow.
Here.
Councilmember Bretafelt. Councilmember Capriolio.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
President Olivia.
Here. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Nick Minerva from Ambassador Baptist Church, followed by the invocation. We will have a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Will you all please stand?
Let's pray. Dear Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the calling and the ability that you have given us to serve the people in our great city. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens are to honor the governing authorities since you have established those authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. So I pray for this assembled council. I ask that you would give them wisdom as they govern, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, and confidence in what is good and fitting. I pray for the agenda set before them today, give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Fresno. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. We now move to the approval of our agenda for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have three changes. The first is Item 1A, File ID 180004, is being removed from the agenda. The 10:00 AM #3 item, File ID 180058, is being continued to 5:00 PM today.
Excuse me, City Clerk.
Yes.
I'm actually going to remove that one because I put it on at 5:00 PM. I'm going to remove it completely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And the final change is the 10:25 AM speaker, File ID 180070, appearance by Enrique Reed, to discuss air cargo is being removed from the agenda by the speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any council members have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Okay, seeing none, the agenda is adopted unanimously. We move now to ceremonial presentations. We begin with Councilmember Chavez, who has the SPCA Pet of the Month.
All right. Morning. So as the council member that, the only council member that can grow a full man beard, I got picked to present the Pet of the Month today. And what's this little sweetie's name?
So this is Addie. She's an eight-month-old terrier, and she's available for adoption. Yeah.
Awesome. So if anybody here is interested, sweet little dog, what's her name again?
Addie.
Addie.
Yeah, so Addie's eight months. She came to us originally, well, she was picked up because in her house, they unfortunately didn't properly care for her. She ended up pregnant, so thankfully, we were able to fix her right before we ended up with the new litter. But now, you know, she just wants to be somebody's baby. She's very friendly. She's a little bit undersocialized in the sense that she's kind of timid and shy, but I'm sure she'll come around because she's already doing already very well in walking and all of that on a leash.
So if anybody needs a little friend or anybody watching us at home, what number can they call to the other?
Yeah, definitely. Give us a call at the SPCA 233-0115. That's our education line, and then you're welcome to ask any questions. Today, or this month is Dog Training Month, so if you have a dog that you want to provide some training for, we can provide you a long list of dog trainers in our area that can help you out with that need.
Thank you, Talia. Thank you to SPCA, and let's find Addie a forever home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next ceremonial proclamation is Steve Schilling Day, sponsored by Vice President Soria. Steve Schilling.
Good morning. So while I believe Terry will be down here with your, like, the little plaque that we have, I am delighted this morning to present this recognition to this wonderful man here. But I do have the pleasure of honoring an individual who has worked very, very hard, has worked with a tremendous amount of dedication, and has transformed an organization, Clinica Sierra Vista, that now serves over 200,000 of the state's most vulnerable and marginalized people in 75 locations throughout the entire San Joaquin Valley and east of the High Desert. So Steve, thank you for being here. During the time when the fight for farmworker justice was well underway, and in that moment of optimist missum, Clinica was born, which is the organization that Steve Schilling has been heading for a number of decades now. Clinica Sierra Vista wasn't always known by that name. It began actually with the name Clinica de los Campesinos, with the goal of providing migrant farmworkers with medical care. Doctors were brought to the field, spoke the language of their patients, didn't ask for papers. Clinica workers lived among the people they served and didn't always get paid. However, if Clinica ever hoped to spread its mission beyond that of a trailer park, which is where they first began, they needed a leader just radical enough to advocate the then provocative notion of health care. Wow, who would have thought about that, right? And even till this day, we see that. And so enough to advocate this provocative notion that health care is a human right and pragmatic enough to provide and expand services in the most conservative region in the state of California. Steve Schilling, he's a fifth-generation Californian, was that perfect leader. And so he has, in his time, renamed the organization to Clinica Sierra Vista and expanded in over three counties, including Fresno, but they did start out in Kern and also are in Inyo. Under his leadership, he has transformed the clinic and is now the largest nonprofit in Kern County and one of the largest in the valley with over 1,200 employees. So today, I am just very honored to be able to acknowledge and recognize him because I know that he's retiring shortly. And so we just want to really thank him for being a trailblazer on this issue, for providing additional access to the underserved community that deserves that access to health care. And so thank you for the work that you've done here in the city of Fresno. I know that we look forward to continue working for the nonprofit to provide and extend access to those that are most vulnerable. So thank you for the work, and so we're just thrilled to be able to honor you and present this special recognition on behalf of the city. So, City Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Steve W. Schilling is a fifth-generation Californian who served in the Peace Corps in underdeveloped rural areas in South America and came back to California in 1973 and began working for Clinica as chief fiscal officer and is the reason why the organization is known as Clinica Sierra Vista today. Whereas Steve W. Schilling's expanded Clinica's territory over three counties, Kern, Fresno, and Inyo, a territory so vast that Clinica can truly say it serves all of California's marginalized people, inner-city residents, those in rural and frontier communities, new immigrants, Dust Bowl immigrants, and their great-grandchildren, the homeless, veterans, the isolated, anyone, in Schilling's word, who is among the least and the last and the lost. And whereas Clinica Sierra Vista today serves 200,000 people in 75 locations and offers not only primary medical, dental, and behavioral health care, but also HIV/AIDS, emotional and clinical support, along with outreach for troubled children and teen moms. And whereas over five decades, the nonprofit has been called upon time and time again to rescue troubled health centers, to respond to natural disasters, and to overtake over worthy but failing community programs and services. Despite the risks involved, Mr. Schilling says yes, as he did in Fresno in 2008, bringing the clinical fold, a number of health centers on the verge of bankruptcy, saving access to care for thousands of Valley residents as well as jobs. And whereas the city of Fresno is honored to recognize the life of Stephen W. Schilling and his dedication to providing quality health care services to Central Valley residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim January 11, 2018, to be Stephen W. Schilling's Day.
So I just want to give a moment to Steve so that he could share. I also did want to recognize that behind him is a great team that, you know, we've worked here, here in the city of Fresno. So if the team members want to stand up just to also be recognized.
Thank you, Member Vice President Soria, and Honorable President and members of the council. I just want to say a few words. It has been a distinct pleasure of mine and my staff to be involved here in Fresno. As the Clerk mentioned, we've been around for now 46 years. Ten years ago, this spring, we were invited up to Fresno because your community health center here was having some challenges. And that was a pretty good-sized step for this program out of Kern County to come up here and do this. But I have to tell you, we have been received terribly supportively and warmly by all of you, the city, the county of Fresno, the patients, the staff that we were able to retain here and keep in this community and expand the services that we're currently providing. There are many, many expansion plans on the drawing tables even as we speak. We'll be opening a new health center out in the north part of the city in a couple of weeks, out near St. Agnes. So we have a lot of plans for Fresno, but I want to just thank you. It was a little scary to come into this town. It was brand-new for all of us, but Fresno has been extremely supportive and warm and inviting, and I really can't appreciate enough how much you all have meant to our organization, and we're happy to continue for many years and decades to come the service we provide to the underserved populations of your wonderful, wonderful city. So thank you very much for this recognition. I appreciate it.
Our next ceremonial presentation will be presented by Vice President Soria. It's a proclamation of Central High Football Day.
Awesome. So if I can get all the gentlemen and Coach Kyle Biggs and Sean Garrick to come on up. Don't be shy. Come on, gentlemen. Oh, we have a full front of the room. So it is my also distinct pleasure this morning to recognize all these fellow young men for the hard work that they put in this last season, and of course, along with their coaches, the head coach Kyle Biggs and Sean Garrick, for really leading these gentlemen into a great and successful year. So the Central High School football team made history this year by winning their first Valley championship in 87 years under the leadership of Coach Kyle Biggs and Assistant Coach Sean Garrick. So let's hear it for them. I know that I am proud, but I know that our entire community is proud, and our community out at Central Unified is proud of our Grizzlies for their hard work and dedication this season, and really for showcasing Fresno's athletic talent here around the valley and throughout the state of California. So before, is the superintendent here? Did I miss you? Mark? Oh, out there. If you want to come and join me for a second, but before we read the proclamation and also we have certificates for all the gentlemen, to be able to recognize you for your hard work, but I did want to allow the superintendent to say a few words.
Impromptu speech. I couldn't be more proud of the two teams we have here today, our football team and our volleyball team. They both played not only with a lot of athletic ability, but also with a lot of pride for their school and for their parents, for their team. It was truly a great effort all season long. They were faced with adversity, both of them were, and continually rose to the occasion in order to come out victorious. First time, I think, ever that one of our Central Valley football teams has been to the state playoffs in Division One football, and we went up to Folsom and competed mightily up there. Same thing with our volleyball team. We went to the state playoffs down in Southern California and did the same thing. So just a great academic and athletic year so far at Central Unified, and couldn't be more proud of our men and women that are here today. So thank you very much.
And one more person before we read the proclamation for the record, but I did want to give Coach Biggs an opportunity to say a few words.
We would just like to say thank you, and we actually offer you a present. That's a signed football from all our players. We just thank you for your support throughout this season, and, you know, we hope to be back here next year. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. So if we could have the Clerk read the proclamation for the record.
Excuse me. Where is the Central High Football Team defeated Buchanan High for the Central Section Division One Championship on December 1, 2017 at Collegian Stadium? And whereas this is the first Valley championship for Central High in the 87-year history of the school? And whereas the city of Fresno is proud of Central High's football team for representing our community and showcasing athletic talent around the Central Valley and throughout California. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby recognize the athletic achievements of the Central High Football Team and do proclaim January 11, 2018, as Central High Football Day in the city of Fresno.
Our next proclamation. Our next proclamation will be Central High Girls Volleyball Day, and it will also be presented by Council Vice President Soria.
Okay, so this is our last presentation this morning in terms of proclamations. I do want to call up our Central High Girls Volleyball Team and also the coach, and Mark, if you also want to join us. So again, I am thrilled this morning to be able to recognize all the young women here that have been part of the Central High Volleyball Team, and so they too excelled this last year, this last season, and so I want to recognize them for their achievements, their hard work, and their dedication, really representing not only Central High, but I think really representing the city of Fresno. And so just on my behalf, on the behalf of our council and our mayor, we want to acknowledge and recognize you guys for winning their Central Section Division One Championship this year under the leadership of head coach Randy Burris, with a record of 40 games won and three games lost. So congratulations on the hard work. Currently, they are ranked number 10 in the state and 59 in the nation, so definitely making a presence out there and making themselves known. So we are very proud of our Grizzly girls for their hard work, dedication, and this year, and really again, for showcasing Fresno's athletic talent around not only the valley but throughout California and the nation. So I would like to recognize the coach. Thank you for leading the way with these young women and really being a great coach and so for an awesome season. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Okay. Thank you. We'd like to all to present you with a signed ball here. Special thanks to Superintendent Sutton, who came to almost all our games and cheered us on and knew all the girls by name. You don't see that very often from a district superintendent that's personally involved. Mr. Perez, Coach Hightower, Coach Pittman, our administrative staff, you, our wonderful little council. I coached Paul's daughter many years ago, so we were talking about it all the time. So thank you for this honor. We'll treasure it always. Thank you.
Perfect. So again, I'm very honored to present this proclamation, and I did get an opportunity actually to go to the Buchanan game this year, and so you guys didn't know that I was out there, but I did watch you guys, you know, win that game, and so I'm very proud of the work that you guys did and really the athletic talent that you guys have. And so I wish you guys much success in the next years, wherever you guys go in terms of, you know, college and your next chapter, but I know that we have great leaders here on this team, and so I just want to congratulate all of you for your hard work and just continue representing us proudly. Thank you. So let's read that proclamation for the record.
Whereas the Central High Girls Volleyball Team defeated Buchanan High in five sets for the Central Division One Volleyball Championship at the College of Sequoias on November 11, 2017. And whereas the Central High Girls Volley Team now holds the title of Division One CIF and TRAC Champions with 40 matches won and only three matches lost, now a ranking number 10 in the state and number 59 in the nation. And whereas the city of Fresno is proud of the Central High's Girls Volleyball Team for representing our community and showcasing athletic talent around the Central Valley and throughout California. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby recognize the athletic achievements of the Central High Girls Volleyball Team and do proclaim January 11, 2018, as Central High Volleyball Day in the city of Fresno.
Coach Burris, good to see you again, my friend. It's been a while. Coach Burris coached my daughter about five years ago. She was an outside hitter, and they won a Central California Tournament Championship. It was the first time, I think, ever, and it was such an exciting tournament, and your coaching and your son's coaching took them to the promised land, and you did it again, and I know you're going to do it another time. So thank you for everything you've done for our community, and my daughter in particular, and I hope a lot of those ladies and some of these gentlemen here, you know, Fresno State, they need good football players, they need good volleyball players. Think about it. We'll help you out. Thank you all.
And that concludes our ceremonial presentations. Thank you all for coming. Counsel, it's now time to approve the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes of December 14? Okay, seeing that there are no changes, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and we have a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this motion? Item carries seven to zero. At this time, we'll now move to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes, Council President, one N.
One N? One N. Is there anything else that anyone wishes to remove from the consent calendar before we proceed? Did we skip your item? All right, we'll go ahead and... Well, City Train, do we have to do the city council president election at this time? What? You would recommend that we do it?
This is how dictatorships start, right here. See this right here?
Okay.
We even need an election. I mean...
We'll do the election.
Are you colluding with Russia?
Okay, pursuant... What did he say? What did you say? Stay off of my Twitter feed. Okay, pursuant to council rules of procedure, Rule Number Two, the council president is elected for a one-year term on a rotational basis sequentially by council district number. Since the current council president is District Seven, next in rotation is District One, Vice President Soria. With Council District Two, Councilmember Brantow, to be vice president, despite the rule requiring rotation, the council shall still hold an election initiated by a motion for both president and vice president, along with public comment, and finally, a vote. Is there a motion to nominate the council president and vice president?
Go move.
And we have a second. So the motion by Member Capriolio, and a second by Member Baines to nominate Esmeralda Soria to be the council president, and Councilmember Steve Brantow to be the vice president. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? If so, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to the council deus. Looking at the screen, there is no one punched up, so we'll go ahead and vote, and I would like to vote electronically, please. And it's unanimous. Esmeralda, come take your seat.
As we wait for this transition, I wanted to congratulate Member Chavez. That chachia pet thing worked out real well for your beard. I don't know how you got it from green to dark, but good job.
Maybe one day you'll be able to grow one.
Hopefully.
Thank you, Council Member Capriola, for your kind words. And I appreciate the support from my colleagues and so I'm looking forward to definitely doing my best job in representing all of you. Before I make additional comments, I just did want to move to the next item. So the next item on the agenda. So annually, the council rules also prescribe an election of officers for the successor agency. So just to, I guess, continue with the agenda, I wanted to ask if there are any nominations for Chair and Vice Chair of the successor agency.
I move to make Council President Soria and Council Member Capriolio Chair and Vice Chair.
So there's a motion to make myself, council president, and Council Member Capriolio Chair and Vice Chair of the successor agency. So having received that nomination, we have a second. Now we'll go to avoid vote on the council. Do we need to do... Oh, we'll go out to the public. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Any comments on the council? Steve, you're punched up. Okay, so is there... I guess we'll just go ahead and take the vote. Do we need to take a roll call vote or just... Okay, so if there is... I'll just say if there's any opposition to the vote, is there any? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and pass the vote unanimously. Thank you. So, yes, absolutely. So I just, before we actually do a little presentation on our former now-president Clint Olivier, I just wanted to say a couple words. I did want to just personally thank everyone that is here. I do want to just say thank you to my parents, my family, for all their support and love. In particular, I just wanted to send a shout out to my mom, really for teaching me the value of service to others and how to be resilient and most importantly, for teaching me to be a strong woman. I'd like to thank my friends and supporters for being here. I know I see many of you guys out there. Thank you for my partner in crime, Terrence, for your love and support. I also want to thank my chief of staff and my team for helping me get to this day. In particular, my chief of staff, Terry Cox, who has been with me from day one, really in making our office function and making us successful and really representing the residents of District One. I also want to give a special thanks to our other staff. So we have Itsie Robles, George Lopez, not the comedian, and Clifford Williams, who all make me look good with our constituents. I do also want to recognize all the interns. And if you all know, I value interns a heck of a lot because they do a lot of hard work in our office. This year, we've had five interns. I'm very proud of the work that they've done. Alexandria Sanchez, Ignacio Barbosa, Audrey Dunn and Natalie Mott. They volunteered countless hours to serve the District One residents. I also just want to say to the mayor, Lee Brandt, I know that he's here in the audience. Thank you for being here. City manager, Wilma Kwan Chechter, our city attorney, Doug Sloan, our city clerk, Yvonne Spence, that as council president, I look forward to working with your departments and really delving in deeper to the working parts of what makes this great city. And so I want to thank everyone that is here today. I also want to give a special thanks to all my council colleagues for being mentors, for being by my side on a number of issues and really helping make this, in my experience here on the council, a great one. I know that they will definitely make this year for me very uncomplicated, right, guys? But I know that there will be much success. I know that as we start this year, I'm very thrilled because while there's a lot of challenges ahead, I know that with this group of men here, we will be able to address those challenges. And so I just want to invite folks that are here today to join me this evening at 5:30 after a long day of work, to join me for a little celebration. We'll have food and appetizers upstairs on the third floor. And so again, I want to thank all of you for being here. And at this time, I'd like to call all my colleagues, if we can go up to the floor, to do the special presentation for former council president Clint Olivier.
And Madam President, there is a representative from the Women's Democratic Club that would like to make her presentation to you first.
Oh, perfect. Come on, Pat.
Madam... Oh. My name is Pat Barr. I'm the president of the 237 strong women and men of the Women's Democratic Club of Fresno. We've been here since the last 38 years. And we'd like to support you completely and we give to you these wonderful flowers and a message. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Come on, Pat.
Madam...
My name is Pat Barr. I'm the president of the 237 strong women and men of the Women's Democratic Club of Fresno. We've been here since the last 38 years. And we'd like to support you completely and we give to you these wonderful flowers and a message. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She said, "That's a wild..."
Thank you for the beautiful flowers. So we will move on with the program. So if we want all, just all of us go up to the front to do that little special presentation for former council president. Where's... I thought you were hiding.
No, man.
No, we just want to take a moment to recognize our former president for his hard work and the dedication that he has presented for the last seven years, but most importantly, this last year as president. So we want to take time to recognize you for your leadership and for being able to work with us in a collaborative fashion. So on behalf of the council, and I know that there are a number of my colleagues that want to say a few words. So I guess before I present him with a couple gifts that we traditionally do, I did want to give an opportunity to my colleagues to say a few words. But I do just want to say to former president Olivier, thank you for your work. It's been a pleasure to have worked with you as your vice president. Thank you for allowing me to, you know, be your sub in those moments when you left the floor. So I have a little bit of training under my belt. But again, you know, I respect you and I value you. I know that we've had an opportunity to work together. Actually, we have an item on the agenda. And so I want to thank you for being willing to work and solving issues that address our community together.
So Clint, in your song, that was your song, right? You kept repeating a... Repeating a word, repeating a word over and over that I've never... Ganja, what is that? I don't... Councilman Bretafeld and I don't recognize that word.
Ganja's going to destroy our park system.
Okay, okay. All right. Right, right. You have a specific grow in any one park we should know about? Okay, all right.
District two, I heard.
District two, I understand. I just wanted to say, Clint, that I think you did a really good job as council president. You showed a level of respect, not only just to the colleagues, we all do that to each other, I think, but to the public. I think you upped it a level and showed respect, even sometimes when people got a little carried away, you were even respectful in those situations. So I just want to say I think you did a really good job for the year that you served. We appreciate it.
And actually, I'm going to follow up with what Steve said. I think you did a really good job in respecting the public. Funny enough, it's not easy always making sure that people are heard and their voices are heard in a way that they feel heard and that's legitimate, and you did that. And I know you actually went out of your way to do it. I sat next to him all year, and it's the best year that I've ever had on council, sitting next to someone. If you ever get a chance, sit next to Council Member Olivier. You are a riot. I mean, you have no idea, the guy's a walking, talking stand-up right now. I mean, and even when we were on... The mics are off. He's having a blast. He's making me crack up and all the time the public doesn't know, but he's having a really good time. Clint, it was a pleasure sitting next to you. We had a blast. Actually, I'm going to miss you and thank you for your service. Your second time around, you definitely were better than the first. We weren't sure if we were going to vote you in, but you know, we feel like, we felt like you came strong, man. So anyway, congratulations, thanks for being a good president. But I'm not sure if he's council president emeritus.
Oh, yeah. I was hoping you wouldn't even bring that up.
Oh, sorry.
I couldn't second that.
Oh, okay. Well, we have to talk about that after if you get the emeritus status.
To my good friend and colleague, it's been six years next to you, seven years in total, and it's been one hell of a ride, Clint. One hell of a ride. You've been a great public servant, but they said when you became council president, one year, not leader for life. So, sorry. But I'll agree with Oliver that, I've told you this before, you should be a comedian or a talk show host.
You guys have no idea. This is great.
But in all sincerity, Clint, it's been great working with you. And to our incoming council president, congratulations. I look forward to working with you. Many big challenges ahead of us. And always, we will never get anything done unless we work together as a team. So congratulations and I won't say condolences.
Well, I guess I could take these off. I didn't know if Jerry Dyer was going to come through that door with our Ganja theme song. So, you know, Clint, congratulations. We're going to continue to be with each other for another year. I'm looking forward to that. And I really appreciate the way you weeded out a lot of the issues that came before the council, and you're really a great bud. I love you, Ben.
You, Clint, you have totally reshaped what comes to mind when I hear certain terms now. And I said it from the dais of the day, I'm going to be very blunt. This was a joint effort. And you brought new meaning to the phrase, "Let's roll." But you just did a great job herding cats. I wrote that on a little note for you, but you did a really good job of just facilitating and more importantly, letting the public participate. And honestly, I didn't know you had it in you, but you did. You did it.
Well, I'm looking forward to hearing all the jokes, Oliver, because he's sitting next to me now.
Oh, no. Get ready.
Right. So I think we're going to have a good time. And you did a great job. And you are a very passionate, strong advocate for the things you believe in. And even, you know, we disagree at times, but I always have respect for the fact you fight hard. And that's important because you got to fight for what you believe in. So good job for the year.
Appreciate it.
I only have this to say, council members, thank you for allowing me to serve you. The last year has been a great honor. So thank you very much. Each and every one of you have your own special things that you bring to this board. But I feel very comfortable in saying that the people who we represent, our neighbors, can really rest easy, that there is a compassionate, strong, energetic and dedicated group of people who are standing right here before you who serve you. So thank you for allowing me to serve you this year. Thank you for allowing me to serve you this year. And Esmeralda, good luck to you. I know you're going to be absolutely fantastic and my door is always open to you if you need anything. So thank you.
So to continue tradition, we have a couple gifts that we wanted to present to the former president. So we all know that the former president has been a champion and very passionate. Hey, you're making history for the city of Fresno, just so you know, so be proud. And so we wanted to provide you with a little token of our appreciation. And so this is one of the, one of the gifts that we got for you. There's a couple others that we want to also...
I can't wait to read those little messages.
Yes, yeah, you can open it.
Is that lethal?
It is as of January.
Oh, my gosh. Come on. It's like...
Socks.
We know you like socks.
Right, I love socks, but I like the ones without weed on them. So I got two of those. Thank you for that.
Act surprised. Act surprised.
That's a very nice one. Thank you very much.
So on behalf of... So just on behalf of all the council members, we wanted to thank you with, give you a little token of our appreciation. And then also wanted to present you with the traditional proclamation. So if we can have the clerk read it for the record.
Whereas Council Member Clint J. Olivier was elected to represent Fresno's 7th District in June of 2010 and was sworn into office in December of that same year. And whereas during the time he has been in office, Council Member Olivier has enjoyed success focusing on issues that are important to people who live in the heart of Fresno, including public safety and senior citizen health partnering within Council President Lee Brand to find savings in 2011, in the 2011 budget to fund a prostitution and graffiti prosecutor within the city of Fresno. And whereas before entering politics, Council Member Olivier majored in speech communications at California State University, Long Beach, served as an air support radio man in the Marine Corps from 1994 to 1998, and worked as a news reporter and anchor for Fresno stations KMPH, Fox 26 and ABC 30 Action News. And whereas he has a beautiful family with his wife Alicia and two sons, frequent visitors to City Hall, Conrad and Carston. And whereas Council Member Olivier served as council president for the Fresno City Council from January to December 2012 and 2017.
Thank you for that.
Act surprised.
That's a very nice one. Thank you very much.
So on behalf of... So just on behalf of all the council members, we wanted to thank you with, give you a little token of our appreciation, and then also wanted to present you with the traditional proclamation. So if we can have the clerk read it for the record.
Whereas Councilmember Clinton J. Olivier was elected to represent Fresno's 7th District in June of 2010, and was sworn into office in December of that same year. And whereas during the time he has been in office, Councilmember Olivier has enjoyed success focusing on issues that are important to people who live in the heart of Fresno, including public safety and senior citizen health partnering within Council President Lee Brand to find savings in 2011, in the 2011 budget to fund a prostitution and graffiti prosecutor within the city of Fresno. And whereas before entering politics, Councilmember Olivier majored in speech communications at California State University, Long Beach, served as an air support radioman in the Marine Corps from 1994 to 1998, and worked as a news reporter and anchor for Fresno stations KMPH, Fox 26, and ABC 30 Action News. And whereas he has a beautiful family with his wife Alicia and two sons, frequent visitors to City Hall, Conrad and Carston. And whereas Councilmember Olivier served as council president for the Fresno City Council from January to December 2012 and 2017, subsequently serving as a chief spokesman and representative for council matters before the public, the state and federal governments, and the city administration. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby thank Councilmember Clint J. Olivier for his leadership as council president and for his outstanding work to the residents of Fresno, and do hereby proclaim January 11, 2018 to be Clinton J. Olivier Day in the city of Fresno.
Round of applause.
Thank you again to everyone for being here on this special day, on this great presentation. And so now we will resume to regular business. Great, so now we will move to council member reports and comments, if there are any. So I have Councilmember Capriolo punched up, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and congratulations again. Looking forward to this year. And I want to wish everybody out there a happy new year. This is our first meeting back, and it's gonna be a great year. 2018 is gonna be fantastic. I also want to congratulate briefly the Fresno State Football Team on this historic win at the Hawaii Bowl, and actually, historic season. It was incredible. So they did a fabulous job, and I want to congratulate them on the record. Thank you, Council President.
Next, we have Councilmember Brettafeld.
Yeah, speaking of marijuana, in light of what went down with the Attorney General, we moved something forward, I don't know, a month or so ago, seems pretty recent. And in light of that ruling where they changed, I guess, the policy on the federal level, I think the council ought to discuss whether we want to proceed or how we want to proceed. So in two weeks, when we meet again, I'm gonna put something on the agenda just for a discussion that we at least discuss in light of the changes that have taken place. I know our city attorney, I've talked with the city attorney about some of these changes. I mean, they're significant changes, and it obviously has thrown some chaos into cities that have moved forward with these dispensaries, and I just think we ought to have that discussion in light of what's taken place, so we'll bring that forward. Is there anything else, city attorney, that you wanted to mention about that?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Yeah, I think that, you said that it's thrown cities into chaos. I've been following the issue very closely, and I don't know of any cities that are in chaos because of what the Attorney General did. I think that the, of course, I wouldn't be opposed to having a discussion or seeing an agenda item. I think that that may be a good idea to get a briefing from our city attorney, but it's... what we're starting to see is Republicans in Congress joining with Democrats in Congress to begin to put pressure on the administration to not turn back, but to turn forward. And so we're seeing congressional delegations from entire states. We're seeing Republicans stand up to the president and say that, you know, that we need to be more forward-thinking. So I think what we're going to see, I think it's important to remember that between now and the next 90, 120 days, when the consultant sits down with the planning department, they're gonna answer a lot of those questions for us, and the situation is changing day by day. So I don't oppose an agenda item to discuss what's going on, but no, there are no states that are changing their laws because of this. I think if something has to give, and there's gonna be a pressure valve that's gonna blow, it's gonna be the federal government, not the state and locals that are gonna give up. So it's a good idea, and I support that. Thank you, council member.
Perfect, thank you. Just a couple of comments on my behalf. We launched our District 1 Young Council Member Program for the second year this year. We are proud to announce that we've accepted 16 students this year to be part of the program, where students will learn about local government through a series of field trips and guest speakers. And so I know that I will invite some of my colleagues to come and speak to the young men and women who are part of this program, and so expect an invitation, but just wanted to announce that. Seeing that there are no other council members punched up, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is consent calendar. So would any council member like to pull any items for discussion?
Item 1N, as in Nancy, please.
Okay, so we'll pull that item. Now we'll go on to vote on the remainder of the consent calendar, but before that, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Motion to approve.
So there's a motion, and there's a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, consent passes unanimously, consent calendar. So item 1N.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to briefly discuss that. I like the idea of the 5 o'clock Thursday before the meeting submission of documents. I started that in my term, and I'll, just to give you a heads up, it's difficult to be strong and say, "Look, you're late. You can't add that to the agenda." So that will be one thing that you'll face, but we just have to be strong and enforce the rules as we amend them on our process here. So be aware of that. And number two on the consent calendar, by moving that, I think perhaps a better way, I understand your theory, which was mine as well, which is not to have all the staff people sitting in here half the morning, waiting to see if their consent item was pulled. So I would suggest that, as president, you can determine that the consent item that is pulled could be set over to 11:00 in the morning, or perhaps 1:30, and that way the staff doesn't have to be here all morning, or hour or two, when the, you know, quite frankly, the taxpayers want Tommy and Scott and everybody else in their offices grinding out units, and they do it well, but I know all of us, we think every minute is precious, so that would give you an opportunity to continue your, all the directors and sponsors to continue their diligent work, unless and until their call to come back to council. And my last suggestion would be the starting of the meeting. I found that toward the end of my term, that 9 o'clock was a good hour, because everybody was basically late. And the second part of the equation is, again, on behalf of our coworkers, it gives them an extra 20 or 30 minutes to get everything ready for the meeting to begin and begin effectively. So it kind of worked out, and I got a lot of compliments from our coworkers, our co-employees, as we are employees of the city of Fresno. And I would just give you those suggestions.
Thank you. Councilmember Brendel.
Yeah, Council President, so you brought this item onto the consent calendar. So what was the overriding concern about the Thursday, having the stuff ready the Thursday before the council meeting? And do we, and why has it been so difficult to meet that in the past, when you tried it? Is it unreasonable?
I think it's enforcement of it, and I think that what we wanted to do, I know that council, my council colleague, like he just spoke, did this during his presidency, and so I've been in conversations with our attorney, with our clerk, in terms of making sure that they have the material on time, so that they produce it, so then we get the information ahead of time and have the opportunity to read through. So we just want to make sure that it is part of the council rules, and they can be changed every time that we change presidency.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not debating that. I was asking...
I think it's enforcement, essentially.
Enforcement. So in this year, if somebody doesn't have, they put something on the agenda, but they don't have their staff report ready, are you saying it will not be allowed to be on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
We want to make sure that all the supporting documents are part of the items when they are submitted by that Thursday at 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Councilmember Brendel, the net effect is, it's beneficial to the staff that they get the information early and can produce it properly, and then that can be presented to our clerk and her team, so we will get our binders hopefully, you know, by 3 o'clock, instead of waiting and waiting until the last item is added to the agenda. So it's an efficiency point, and it works. And if you, unfortunately, if you don't do it in a timely manner, my chief of staff, Laura Rios, and I were, we didn't want to say no, but you gotta say no. So that's incumbent upon us to produce the document that you feel is so important, you need to get it ready, and get it to the agenda, and get it to the clerk, and get it to us, so we have plenty of time to review it and make an important decision.
And it also, I think, it also, I think, gives the public additional opportunity, because I know that it's common that we submit late stuff, you know, and I've been also, I've done that before, so I won't say that I'm not to blame, and so I think that it's good practice, so that the public has also enough time to go through and have the information ahead of time.
Now, there are times when things get added to the agenda on the Friday that the agenda's gonna be published. It's happened. I've added things. Are you saying that, I mean, that's what happens. How often does that, does that happen almost every week, Yvonne, or every other week, probably, right? Every other meeting?
I think about every meeting.
Yeah, it happens at least once a month, for sure. And that's on Friday, when we should be printing, we're still adding.
Yeah.
And then people think that, okay, once they submit it, they're done, but there's still a lot of work on the clerk's side that needs to happen, and the copy center's side that needs to happen before it can be distributed to you all. And sometimes we're putting it out there at 5:30, 6 o'clock, and you guys are gone. So, yeah, this will help resolve some of that.
Okay, so we won't be able to add, because of this rule, anything onto the agenda Friday mornings in the future?
Yes.
Because it won't be complete, which matches this rule that says it has to be complete by Thursday evening at 5:00 p.m.
I think that there's always those extreme circumstances, or those special cases, but I think that to move forward in terms of this year, what I would like to see is that we have the information ahead of time. Obviously, things happen, right? And so once those things happen, I think we'll assess it at that point, but I think what we want to encourage everyone, council members and also city staff and directors, to just get that information ahead of time.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Counsel, to be clear, are there any of the suggested changes from what was written that you want to incorporate into the rules?
Oh, I just wanted to ask you one question in terms of the consent that we had talked about and how we moved it. Just because I put it there, I can always, just every time I set the agenda, have the flexibility to time it if I want, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
And then the meeting starting times?
Yes, I would like to actually start them at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
A motion to approve.
So now, Councilmember Brettafeld.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and to have it be more efficient, but we've had instances where things have been later, and we'd like them to, you know, get on the agenda. I'd be concerned about the possibility that would be a problem in the future. So I'm probably gonna be the lone no vote on this. I'm not gonna support this for that reason, but I certainly understand what you're trying to do, and understand that.
And Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I'll support this, but let me, let me just share this with you. The council president is nothing if not a facilitator. It's a facilitator position. If you are rigid for no reason, and if you are rigid just to be rigid and to enforce discipline, you will fail. You have to be a facilitator. The reason why the people who live in the city are used to a very nimble and responsive city government is because we're flexible. We're flexible here at the council level, we're flexible upstairs, we're flexible in the city manager's office, we're flexible because we can move things forward. So all I'm saying is, I appreciate that you're bringing something forward, I appreciate that you want to make sure that we run efficiently and well, but remember that the council president is, number one, a facilitator, and, number two, being too rigid will set you up to have a difficult year. So I'll support that today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, former council president, for your feedback and comments. And so, like I mentioned, I know that there'd be those extreme, there's special circumstances, and so, you know, in terms of flexibility, I will have some, but I think that just to continue moving our meetings efficiently, and to provide more transparency for our public, I think having the information ahead of time is important, and so I think it's a good goal to have. So with that, we do have a motion, and was there a second?
Seven.
Chavez? Okay, is there any opposition? So there's one opposed, so the motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you. So we'll go out to General Admin, item 3A. We do have a couple hearings at 10 o'clock, but I think we'll be able to do a few of the general administration. So 3A is an action related to biomethane purchase and sale agreement with Colony Energy Partners.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Congratulations. Thank you, Council. This agenda item, we have two requests from the city council. First is to, let me grab the right one. Adopt a finding of Class 1 existing facilities categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And action item 2 is to authorize the city manager to execute a biomethane purchase and sale agreement with Colony Energy Partners LLC. A little bit of background on this agenda item, during fiscal year 2017, council approved the staff to proceed with constructing a gas pipeline interconnection from our wastewater treatment plant to PG&E's transmission main at Jensen and Chateau Fresno. We estimate that that's a 24 to 60-month process that will require us to get that project complete with PG&E. It'd be one of the first ones, if not the first one, they've done, so a lot of scrutiny on how they want to do that. We currently produce a lot of digester gas at the wastewater plant. We have equipment there that can clean it to pipeline quality, turns it into a renewable energy, and with the incentives that are out there at the federal government level and the state government level, we can sell that at a premium on the market, and so that's our long-term plan. But in waiting for that 24 to 60 months to get here and we get our PG&E, we would, we recommend that we enter into this limited-time agreement with Colony Energy. They will take the gas immediately. We'll start receiving revenue from them about a year from now, and it'll be free cash above our existing operations of anywhere from 1.5 to 2.8 million dollars, and that revenue will be used to reinvest back into the wastewater treatment plant. Will also reduce our operating costs at the wastewater treatment plant associated with moving some of these operations over to the Colony Energy Group. And so with that, we would like to request approval of these action items, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Tommy, for that presentation. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Hey, Tommy, I, my question's gonna be really quick, I just want to bring something up. The idea that we'll be able to generate income from this, in theory, as I see it at least, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, would... and you can correct me if I'm wrong, what I see the big benefit is for ratepayers ultimately.
Ultimately for the ratepayers, yep. This offsets revenues we would need to take from them, this offsets that cost.
Yeah, and I just wanted to kind of set on the record so that, you know, the public understands, and I know we get it up here, but the importance of this is really it helps stabilize rates for ratepayers and allows us to not have to pass on additional costs to them.
Perfect, thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion.
Perfect, thank you. Seeing no one else punched up, so we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion by councilmember Oliver Baines and a second by councilmember Capriolio. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none. The motion passes 6-0 with councilmember Olivier absent. Item 3B, actions pertaining to the City of Fresno Phase 2 Regional Transmission Main Segment B and C.
Good morning, council president, city council members, Mike Carbajal, Department of Public Utilities. Today, we are recommending to award a construction contract to Vito Artukovich and son Vidmar Joint Venture for the construction of the Phase 2 Regional Transmission Main Segments B and C. The Phase 2 RTMs will convey treated water from the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility to the existing, through the existing water distribution system in a network of approximately 13 miles of large diameter pipelines. Segments B and C are the third and fourth of four Phase 2 RTM segments that will be constructed. It includes about three and a half miles of 12 to 42-inch diameter pipeline. We opened bids on November 17th of 2017, and Vito Artukovich Vidmar JV submitted the low bid, which was 14% below the engineer's estimate. Upon evaluation, Vito Artukovich Vidmar JV was determined to be the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and we are now recommending approval of the 48th Amendment to the Annual Appropriations Resolution Number 2017-165 to appropriate necessary funds within the RTMs State Revolving Fund Low Interest Loan Fund and award a construction contract in the amount of $11,490,484. Thank you. Be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mike, for that presentation. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve. It's in my district partially.
There's a motion by councilmember Capriolio and a second by councilmember Chavez. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none. Motion passes 6-0 with Clint Olivier absent. Next, we have item 3C, actions pertaining to Home Investment Partnership Program Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with Habitat for Humanity Fresno County, Inc.
Morning, council president and council members. Congratulations. This morning, I am standing before you, Kelly Furtado, Assistant Director in the Development Resource Management Department regarding the housing division. And we are in front of you this morning regarding an action pertaining to a home investment partnership program where we are working with Habitat. The staff report is quite comprehensive, and in the audience today are both Karina Nunez, our project manager, as well as Matthew Grundy with Habitat to answer any detailed questions you may have. But in summary, the city would be providing a choo-to loan to Habitat at a low interest, and they would be completing work on a couple of projects that were detailed in the package. So again, the information is in the staff report. If you have any questions, we're all here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. So there's, we'll go out to the public. First, is there anyone from the public who wishes to make any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Baines?
Thank you, council president. I'm happy to make a motion to approve this item. Habitat for Humanity is one of our cherished partners in the City of Fresno and working with our home program. Listen, we obviously need to be doing what we can to support this. Quick question, Kelly, and I think I read this in the staff report, but I may have missed it, how many homes are we going to build with this?
So this particular project is, one, three-bedroom, two-bath, and two, four-bedroom, two-bath homes. So it would be a total of three homes in that configuration.
Okay, that's fantastic. Well, listen, like I said, I'm happy to make a, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this, and actually, and I just saw that. I will second Council President Soria's motion that is in your district. I was just excited to be, to be working with Habitat, sorry about that, council president.
Thank you for that excitement, I share that with you. I did want to call up Matthew Grundy just to kind of share their work, and I know that I am thrilled that this project is in District 1. I know that there's been talk about it for some time, so I'm excited to have Habitat in District 1 and really providing this phenomenal opportunity for families in the City of Fresno. And so just wanted to give you an opportunity to maybe just share a little bit about the project and kind of timeframe.
Yep. First of all, thank you again, Matthew Grundy, CEO at Habitat for Humanity Fresno County. I want to thank you, council members, and Happy New Year to you. So delighted to be here. Congratulations, President Soria. Excited to work with you. You know, for 32 years, Habitat has partnered with the City of Fresno to build strength, stability, and self-reliance through affordable homeownership for families who otherwise can't afford it. We don't believe in handouts, we believe in handups, so families have to qualify, they have to demonstrate need by living in substandard housing, and they have to be willing to partner. That means they invest 500 hours of their own sweat working on the home with community members. So good old-fashioned community being built as a byproduct in 32 years, lending exclusively to extremely low to moderate-income families, we've had only one foreclosure. So we're really proud of the work. It's a communal work, and we wouldn't be able to do it without you. We're particularly excited about this project, in which we will be building in District 1, presuming you approve, and we're excited about that because we've not done that yet. I want to send a special thank you to President Soria and her staff. A few months back, we were able to partner to outreach to the community to identify families that did qualify for these three homes. So that being said, this project includes land acquisition, site improvements, and the development of three single-family homes. And thank you so much for your time. Not sure if you had any other questions other than that.
So have you guys selected the participants yet or the families?
We have all the applicants. We didn't want to select and let them know until this process concludes. The, to answer your previous question earlier around timeframe, we have, per the agreement, have until 2020 to complete this project, but we intend to complete this project in calendar year 2018, so this year.
Awesome. Well, looking forward to work, to continue working with you guys, and so just thrilled and excited about the investment going into this neighborhood and about the partnership that you guys will continue to have with families in building homeownership here in the City of Fresno. And so thank you again for your work. I'm proud to make the motion, and second by councilmember Baines. So there's no one else punched up. Is there any opposition to this motion? Seeing none, the motion passes 6-0 with councilmember Olivier absent. Thank you. So we'll go ahead, we have about one minute till we get to 10:00 a.m. We have a couple hearings, starting at 10:00. Oh, it's 10:00. So we'll go to the first hearing, 10:00 a.m., hearing number one, to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding the City of Fresno Community Development Facilities District Number 11, Annexation 85. And that's in my district.
Good morning, council president, members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing to annex property into Community Facilities District Number 11. This is property on the corner of Polk and Dakota Avenues, west of 99 in Council District 1. This is being requested by the landowner, it's D.R. Horton is the developer. And this is a modification to reduce the amount that the homeowners will pay. The new amount that they'll pay annually is $659.16. Staff is recommending approval after a public hearing. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Andy. Now we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. No one is punched up, so I will make that motion. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Capriolio. Is there any opposition to this motion? Seeing none, the item passes 5-0 with councilmember Steve Brando and Clint Olivier absent. Thank you. So we'll go on to the hearing number two. Go ahead, Andy.
Good morning again, Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is another Community Facilities District. This is into Community Facilities District Number 9, which is what we use for commercial and multifamily projects. This is a hotel that is being built on Fresno Street east of Alluvial. It is in Council District 6. The annual assessment is $2,716 per year, and staff is recommending approval. We have received the ballots, and the developer is supportive of the annexation.
Perfect, thank you. We will go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais for discussion.
Motion to approve.
So now we have a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Capriolio makes the second. And so is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none. Motion passes 5-0 with councilmembers Olivier and Brando absent. Our next hearing that we have is at 10:05, so we'll wait for about two minutes. We don't have anything else, right?
Council president, the asset report is probably five to 10 minutes. We can work that in whenever you'd like, the people are here.
Okay, why don't we start that, and then as soon as that, if you say it's only going to take a few minutes, then we can go on to the 10:05 hearing. So we'll go ahead and take that item.
All right. You all want to get set up while I introduce it? Okay, counsel, as you know, pursuant to the asset resolution, it requires a quarterly report from both the city attorney's office and the city manager's office. Primarily, the purpose is to update you on any needs of the, needs of the team, the status, and some results we're getting out in the field. First, I wanted to introduce Cheryl Wells, a new addition to the team, Cheryl. She's a lawyer with the team. She comes to us from Superior Court, actually. So the team, as I understand it, is complete, both the legal team and on the staff side. They are up and running, I think the boat is planning out, and they're getting lots of good results now. I wanted to clarify, because there's been some confusion apparently between asset and then the inspection program. The inspection program, and you were briefed on that too, is to proactively go into the field and check some primary things in residential rental units. Asset is more the in-depth, find all of the significant health and safety violations, and potentially pursue receiverships and those kinds of things. And they've gotten some great results doing that. But even though the two programs are related to rental housing, they're not the same. As I understand it, we've heard some people on the radio that may have confused the two. When the asset people go in and find significant health and safety violations, they will document all of the violations in that residence or in that apartment complex. Whereas the inspection, rental inspection program is there to check some primary things that the council approved, them checking pursuant to that program. So I just wanted to clarify that. I understand it that the city manager was going to say something, and then I've got Christina Roberson, a lawyer in the office on the asset team, prepared to go through some results and with some pictures of some of the units that, with some problems they've found here recently.
Perfect, thank you, city attorney. And thank you for the continued work, for the team effort that we have. I think it's working out really well. The volume and quality of work produced by this team is very impressive, and what's most impressive to me is the effectiveness that we've seen and the compliance that we've already achieved. As noted in the quarterly report, the team remains focused on several active cases and is almost done evaluating another dozen for the potential target list.
I think we're having a little trouble hearing you, so.
Okay. Just point a little bit. Is that better? Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Do you want me to start over, or is that, okay, perfect. I also, as the report mentions, that we're going to be hosting the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers for training later this month, and I'm really looking forward to welcoming that team. And with that, we'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you and good morning, Council President Soria and council members. I am Christina Roberson, Deputy City Attorney with Asset. We have prepared some slides that do highlight some of the violations in different properties that we've been working on and some of the current results. First up, we have 4853 East University. This was a vacant, five-unit abandoned apartment complex. It's in District 4. We actually had a receiver appointed on this, to oversee this property on December 19th. We have recently received a signed order from the court, and the receiver should be taking possession of the property actually this week. There were numerous significant violations, as you can see, holes in ceilings, walls, the continuous problem with transients and squatters that would break into the property almost on a weekly basis. So this property, again, will be under the control of the receiver, actually already is. The next property on the list is 1203 West Simpson. This one is at an earlier stage of the process. It is a partially occupied, 14-unit apartment complex. Asset has completed inspections of all the units, both the interior and the exterior, and those inspections revealed 700 violations. There was a reinspection on January 3rd, and most units were re-inspected with very few violations corrected. At this time, Asset is evaluating next steps on this property. Here's some more pictures from 1203 West Simpson, again, significant health and safety issues. The next property that was listed in the report and in the photographs.
Excuse me. No one was living in there, right?
Those were partially occupied, so I believe that some of these photographs are, were from the vacant units, some were boarded and vacant. There had been problems with people breaking into those units. There were some that were occupied, and those units did have significant violations as well, specifically mold, you know, there were definitely health and safety violations throughout the complex, but I do believe some of these were unoccupied units. The third property highlighted is 4242 East Olive. This one is a 12-unit apartment complex in District 7. It, at the time of inspection, was also partially occupied. The inspection of the interior and exterior of each unit revealed 548 violations. Again, some of the same similar significant health and safety issues were identified. This is an example of a property that we've been able to achieve some compliance, and there's been a significant renovation that has occurred on this property. The notes in the, in the report state that appeal of the notice and order is calendared for January 18th. Since that time, we've actually entered into an extension agreement with the property owner based upon the significant repairs that had already been made, and the compliance date is now February 2nd. Here's more pictures from the Olive property, again, some occupied and some unoccupied units at the time of the inspection. The next property on our list is 5039 and through 5049 East Lane. This is a 16-unit apartment complex in District 5. This, again, there was an interior and exterior inspection that was completed for each unit, revealing 1,290 combined violations for the interior and exterior. Those violations included broken windows, roach infestations, there were electrical issues, missing smoke detectors, egress issues, again, some very significant issues, and most of these units were occupied at the time of the inspection and continue to be occupied. Again, on this property, an extension and settlement agreement has been executed. The agreement states that the violations shall be corrected by February 28th of this year, and progress inspections are ongoing. So that is the status of that property at this time.
Hey, Christina, are you about to move on to the next one?
Yes.
All right. Just, I just want to pause here for my colleagues, because I want to tell you a story that this guy, I won't say his name, but it's right there at the top of the page.
Shame.
Yeah, this guy went on local radio and claimed that the City of Fresno was essentially
This guy went on local radio and claimed that the city of Fresno was essentially harassing him with unjust claims. Now, you can see a couple of photographs here.
These are actually some more photographs from the same property.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Oh, here's some more. Same property, right? Same stuff that we've been seeing in the other photos. So unfortunately, that he was able to convince the public that the city of Fresno is just writing up useless code infractions, that they're just numbering them too many, and they're making it impossible to do business in the city of Fresno. I'm a good guy that's trying my best to get ahead in the city of Fresno. I just want our councilmembers to be aware that we do have people that are opposing, you know, for whatever reason, some of the stuff that we're doing, and they've been able to mislead the public in some cases. So just be really aware of that. This guy called in under a pseudonym. He did not use his real name. It was pretty easy to detect which properties he was talking about, and so I just wanted my colleagues to be aware. We're really doing good work, and people are out there trying to say that we're going overboard, that we've gone too far, these types of things. I see Wilma shaking her head. Right, Wilma? So I think I can say this. I'm a councilmember, so this really happened, and I had to follow up with some questions about it and tried to clear up the haze about this, but I just want everybody to be aware of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
The next property that has been ongoing for some time is a large condominium complex at 4954 North Holt, known as West Shaw Estates. An exterior inspection of this property revealed over 750 violations. This property also has, we have entered into a settlement agreement with the homeowners' association. $20,000 has been paid to the city, and they have agreed to make significant repairs and also correct some of the behavior issues that were, take steps to correct behavior issues that were occurring on that property. The next property that we've highlighted, it's actually two different properties, but they had the same ownership essentially, and we went to court on both properties in the same petition for receiver. That's 1367 East San Ramon, which is a four-unit apartment complex in District Four, and 6540 North Winery, which is a single-family home in District Six. Both of these properties, again, as I stated, have been under the control of a receiver. The apartment complex on San Ramon has been sold, and the new owner is an investor who has agreed to make repairs and post a bond in order to ensure those repairs are made. The single-family home on Winery has been rehabilitated, and the pictures that are shown are actually pictures of that property, that single-family home. You can see that significant work was done to clear out a lot of junk rubbish and other problems in the property. And, you know, there's a picture of the exterior looks significantly different than it did when we started this property. That concludes the slides. I just had a few other comments about some other things that have worked so far with the team. I wanted to highlight the ongoing work of the law clerks and the investigators. As stated in the report, the law clerks have successfully negotiated settlement agreements, defended the city in administrative hearings, and prepared a receivership for court that was granted. Currently, each of the law clerks are assigned additional receivership cases and a number of other cases, and they've been a very valuable resource. Our two legal investigators are also a hugely valuable resource. They've assisted in property and ownership research for the properties on nearly every property that Asset has touched. They're also instrumental in getting cases prepared for court, and they also have been assigned properties that are essentially their own cases that they assist in prior to the need for the property to go to court. They also are currently very instrumental in researching the properties that are going to be going on to the Asset list as potential consideration. And they've also successfully worked directly with property owners to gain compliance. I did also briefly want to highlight two additional properties that have risen Asset's attention since the filing of the quarterly report. There's a six-unit unfinished construction project in District Seven where Asset has uncovered significant evidence of illegal occupancy of units that have never been cleared for occupancy. And there are also two single-family homes on 1APN in District Three with several health and safety issues, including missing smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, lack of water, and other unsanitary conditions. And Asset is currently evaluating next steps on each of those properties. And that concludes my portion of the report unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. There's a couple members punched up, so we'll go Councilmember Capriolo.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations. This has come so far in such a short period of time, and I can't thank you and your team enough, and specifically on the two properties in District Four. They've been a nightmare for us, and we're on the road to recovery, if you will. So please keep up the good work. Thank your team members. Congratulations. I sincerely appreciate all you folks do. Thank you.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, I too want to offer my congratulations to you, to the City Attorney's Office, to Councilmember Brandow and Olivier for developing Asset. This is the way it ought to be done. You go after the bad guys, and you take their properties if they don't respond to the violations. And this wasn't happening years ago. It's happening now, and so I commend you all. We don't need to register all the people who are doing good things in terms of renting and taking care of their properties. We needed to do this, which is going after the slum lords and the bad guys. You guys are doing it, and congratulations to everybody involved and those who developed this.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I just want to offer a couple comments. I also want to thank you for the information that you provided. I want to thank the team, the Asset team, for their hard work in these last few months and really getting down to enforce what this council approved. I think that this program is a great example of, you know, an example here in the city of Fresno is that when you put the resources to work, they work. And it demonstrates also a commitment from this council to ensure that we have quality housing available for our residents, and that folks know in our community that we mean serious business about folks upkeeping their properties, because we know that the upkeep of properties not only impacts quality of life of the residents that live in them, but also impact the property values that are surrounded in those neighborhoods. And so I want to thank you guys for the hard work, and just, again, a great example of when you do allocate resources, there could be adequate enforcement, and so the work shows for that. So thank all of you guys for the great work that you guys are doing out in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Council President.
I think that is it, unless there's something else? Great. Thank you. We will go back to our 10:05 hearing.
Good morning, Council President, members and staff. My name is Jason Cammott, Chief Surveyor of the Public Works Department, and I'm here today to ask council to open the required public hearing for the vacation of the Eman Alley lying southeast of the Mariposa Mall. The hearing date was set by Resolution of Intent 1121-D, which was approved by council by consent on December 14, 2017. The vacation is being requested by River Park Properties. The request is being made to gain additional access to the exhibit building on the east corner of Mariposa Mall and M Street. The alley is currently a dead-end alley, which Traffic Division tried to eliminate when possible. It currently is not used for public street purposes. It is fenced off. There is no public vehicular access due to the current use of the Mariposa Mall for pedestrian purposes. And there are utilities there, so we're going to ask to have reserved a public utility over the entire area being vacated. And at this time, I'd ask council to open up a public hearing and recommend that the vacation be approved. I'm available for questions if you need.
So we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Oliver Baines, this is in your district. Did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. Staff's recommendation.
So there's a motion and a second by Councilmember Capriolo. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. So we'll go on to the 10:20 a.m. hearing. It's a TEFRA hearing. Sir Staff?
Good morning, Councilmembers. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. Before you today is a resolution approving the issuance of no more than $50 million of tax-exempt bonds by the California Public Finance Authority on behalf of Reliant Valley LP. Up to $32 million of the proceeds will be used for improvements at the Big B Village Apartments, while up to $18 million of proceeds will be used for improvements at the West Gate Gardens Apartments. Both of these apartment complexes are located here in Fresno. Under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, the governing body, the entity where the facilities that gain the benefit from the bond issue are located, must hold a hearing to receive public testimony and approve the issuance of the refunding bonds. This hearing was noticed in the Fresno Bee on December 27, 2017. Two days ago, the city received a letter from a local organization expressing some concerns with this proposed issuance. I believe the council has seen that letter and has also seen the City Attorney's comments regarding that letter. I will also note that representatives from the authority have reached out to the organization to address the concerns that they raised. Payments of these bonds would be the sole responsibility of the authority from their revenue streams. The city will have no obligation or liability associated with these facilities or these bonds. Staff recommends the council conduct the required TEFRA hearing and at its conclusion adopt the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Public Finance Authority. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
So we'll go out to the public. Excuse me. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, we'll come back to the dais.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have Councilmember Oliver Baines make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brandow absent. Thank you. We are shy of a minute for our next hearing. Oh, was that removed?
That was removed on changes to the agenda.
Okay, so...
Next is 10:30.
We could do unscheduled, Council President.
Yeah, so what we'll do right now, we'll do unscheduled communication. So is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment at this time? Seeing none. Well... Well, we have six minutes. So we'll go ahead and take a break for a few minutes and come back at 10:30. So if you guys can be back in about six minutes, thank you. So we'll resume our meeting. Now, we'll continue with the 10:30 joint meeting of the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Fresno and the Fresno Revitalization Corporation. Marlene?
Thank you. Good morning. This is the Recognized Obligation Payment Report for the period of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And as you may recall, the reporting period changed from semiannual to annual, and so this will be our 12th ROPS due for submission to the State Department of Finance on February 1, and we will be meeting with the Oversight Board on January 17 prior to submitting it to the state. The total amount for the obligations to be paid from this ROPS for this period is about $6.3 million. This total primarily represents repayment of city agency and third-party loans. We prevailed in the Sacramento Superior Court in our position on the way interest on loans should be calculated, and as a result of that, we will receive about $1.5 million more in interest over the life of these loans, and $1.5 will come forward during this period, this next period that we're reporting on. So again, that action by the Sacramento Superior Court resulted in another $1.5 million for the city of Fresno to receive in this back interest. By the way, in terms of all loan repayment for the city agency loans, today, up until June 30, as of June 30 of 2018, or until June 30 of 2018, there's a balance owing of The total that's been paid back thus far is $16,600,000. So the city will have received at the end of the total loan payback period, $44,688,376. So that is worth noting, again, of which $16 million has been paid. The other $28 million will be paid into the future. Back to the ROPS. When this $6.3 million is paid for our obligations and it's subtracted from the total projected amount of tax increment, net of county administration fee and so forth, the net amount will be $10.4 million to be divided among the taxing entities. So about $2 million will come to the city from that tax increment. Also, it's worth mentioning that the sale of land, it's not reflected on the ROPS. It's reported separately. But as you know, we're charged with selling all of the non-housing real property, and since we began that task in January of 2016 through December 2017, we've netted about $8.5 million, and that, again, is divided among the taxing entities, so the city generally receives about 25% of that. There is a small amount of property remaining to be sold. In any event, that sums up the ROPS. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Marlene. So with...
Do we have to... Excuse me, Councilmember Capriolo. Do we have to go out to the public first? So let me go out to the public, and then I'll bring it back to the dais. So is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolo.
Thank you. So good to see you, Marlene. Good to be part of your team again as the Vice Chair. Look forward to working with you. So with net dollars to the city of Fresno, where do those dollars end up, the final, final destination?
They end up in the general fund. They end up in the general fund. Of the loan payback, the city agency loan payback, of that portion, 80% goes to the city general fund, and 20% goes to your housing successor agency. 20% of the loan payback. But from the tax increment, your share of that tax increment, which, again, we figure is about $2 million, that goes to your city general fund. The 80% of the loan payback goes to your city general fund, and the city's portion of the property sales go to your general fund.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for that. You were such a good advocate in Sacramento on that interest situation. I don't know how you did it, but congratulations. That's fantastic.
We had a lot of help. I want to call out our contract counsel. They were excellent, and I want to call out our Chief Financial Officer also did a tremendous amount to make this go forward. So a lot of hands helping on this, but it's a great, great win. And you may know that we presently have another pending matter, and that's around $5 million in loans that have been disputed. So that is in the works, and hopefully we'll make a good case on that as well.
Well, again, congratulations, and although it's my first day as Vice Chair, I'm going to take a lot of credit for this. So thank you very much. Look forward to our future together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolo. And, you know, I'll echo that. I'll also take a credit. No, in all seriousness, thank you, Marlene. I know that you've continued to work hard to ensure that the city of Fresno gets the resources that are fair and that our community deserves. So I want to thank you for the work that you've done and just look forward to continuing working with you as other projects come up, as other fights that we have to face with the state. the state. Know that we will be there to support you, to make those meetings and go to Sacramento if we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that the screen is clear, is there a motion? Want to make a motion by Councilmember Capriolo? Second by Councilmember Chavez. Is there any opposition? Seeing none. Pass the motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Clint Olivier absent. So I actually like to remove an item that I put on the agenda. I was asked by the Air Resources Board to do so. Want to bring the item back next council meeting if there is any opposition. Just like to have additional time to sit down with our local air board and also the council member. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and remove and bring it back next month. Oh, not next month, next meeting. So item, we'll go to item 4B. And this is a resolution establishing the Central Southeast Area Specific Plan Steering Committee, sponsored by Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Soria. This is a process that very closely mirrors what we did over in southwest Fresno. I would like to modify the language in there. I think there'll be opportunity for maybe two additional committee members, two joints. I'd like to modify that to include up to 17 individuals on that committee. Not say we'll have 17, but at least have that flexibility. And with that, I'd like to make the motion.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Chavez, a second by Councilmember Baines. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the motion passes 6-0 with... Oh, we didn't go out to the public. I am so sorry. We'll go out to the public next. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll come back. There's been a motion and a second. And again, is there any opposition to that motion? Seeing none. Motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have, I think we only have closed session left? Yeah, so is everyone okay with taking a recess and then coming back at 3? I think that we do have some out-of-town folks, so we do ask very respectfully that we all be on time so that we can move smoothly at 3.
Quick question. Doug, can we do any of the items before or just...
No, we thought this morning would run longer, so we told them, we didn't want the lawyers here just sitting around all morning. So we told them to plan on being at 3 p.m., and I think the police chief was planning on being there at 3 p.m. also.
Okay, all right.
So we really can't.
Okay.
But I can go ahead and announce it. If you want to go into break, then go straight to closed session at 3.
Yeah, why don't we announce, go to break, and then come back at 3 o'clock?
All right. In closed session, we'll have existing litigation, the Centano versus Fresno case, also existing Motley versus City of Fresno, existing Veronica and Noble versus City of Fresno, and then also Mendoza versus City of Fresno.
And after closed session, councilmembers don't have to come back to the dais, right?
Not immediately.
Or just the two? We have the two timed items?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Closed session will probably take about an hour.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We're going to go... Is it on? Is it on? Perfect. Thank you. So we're ready to resume to the 4:15 item by Councilmember Brettafield.
Thank you. This is just a resolution to formalize what the city attorney is already doing, and I want to commend the city attorney and your staff for basically having two attorneys get deputized by the district attorney in order for you, I guess after the second violation, move forward to impound a car that has been, for the second time, dumping in our community. Want to thank Lisa Smith Camp, the district attorney, obviously, for helping with that and making that a reality. I know the council has talked about, well, not only talked about, but did increase the fines one, first time, second time, third time. This is just another tool, I think, obviously, an effective tool for somebody who's not taking seriously the fact that the City of Fresno wants to stop the dumping throughout the community. So this is a resolution formalizing the action that we're going to take with the city attorney, and so I'd like to make a motion for that to be approved.
Perfect. I will take it out to the public. If there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item, come on down. Seeing none. So we have a motion. I think Councilmember Chavez had already made the second. Yeah. Seeing that the screen is clear, unless there's anyone else that wants to discuss.
Heard is muffling the voice.
So if there's no... The screen is clear, so we'll go ahead and just take the vote. Is there any opposition to this motion? Great, seeing none. The motion passes unanimously. Oh, no. Sorry, Clint is missing. Sorry. 6-1 with Councilmember Olivier absent. I forgot about him. How I quickly forget about him. And we have, in about five minutes, and we'll wait for Councilmember Olivier, who has his So we'll go ahead and resume. I believe Councilmember Clint Olivier is prepared to present his 4:30 item.
Thank you very much, Council President. And again, congratulations on being elevated to that position. What I wanted to do, I guess, is to give the history of the situation that we have on Belmont right now, on East Belmont, between Blackstone and Peach, give or take. Our city is really a special place. It's not, it's really a patchwork of really cool neighborhoods. You think of the Tower District, you think of Fulton Avenue now, or Fulton Street now. Blackstone, of course, gets lots of attention. There's the north with River Park and Fresno State. So it's a special place, and as we see in land use, I think from time to time, we do things, we update the general plan, we change the development code to reflect where we, as a community, want to go. And I think from time to time, there are hiccups. And I think our professional city staff will acknowledge that when you're doing, taking on something as monumental as what we've done here at the City of Fresno in the past, you know, six, seven years in terms of land use, that sometimes maybe a shotgun approach won't always work, especially when you have intricate neighborhoods and intricate situations like we do in the City of Fresno. One of those places is along Belmont Avenue. And if you haven't been down to Belmont Avenue lately, I suggest that you go. It's a special place because it's a location that's known throughout our city as a place where you can go to get quality goods and services at an affordable price. So if you need tires or brakes, if you need furniture, if you need appliances, if you want to have lunch, if you want to buy a used car, if you want to get some metal work done, this is a place where you go, is Belmont. And I think that in our drive to make Fresno more walkable, more public transit friendly, in our drive to improve our city, I think it's important that we keep in mind that there are special places. You know, someone may look at Belmont Avenue and say, boy, this is kind of grungy, there's not much of a sense of place here, you know, there's not a park and a water fountain and a statue. But in its own way, Belmont Avenue is a very beautiful place because there are lots of entrepreneurs and there are lots of individuals who have businesses. They've spent their lives working there, and their retirement is tied up in the property there. And even if you're just a customer, it's a special and unique place because it's a place where you can spend your hard-earned money and get real good value. So I'm just a big, I've been called Lord Blackstone, but maybe I could be now Lord Blackstone, Duke of Belmont, because it's a place that I support and it's a place I've been a big booster even before I took office. So I wanted just to read a letter from a constituent that I received. My family, I'll leave the name out. My family owns several businesses on Belmont. I think we're missing the mark on this one. The types of businesses that belong on Belmont should not be the prime issue. The focus should be on zoning. Neighborhood mixed use, which is what we rezoned Belmont to be with the development code and the general plan, neighborhood mixed use is the wrong zoning for Belmont. Take a drive down Belmont. What do you see? You see car lots, smog shops, tire shops, car repair, auto detailing. Belmont is a commercial street and deserves commercial zoning. I just don't see a developer investing in Belmont under neighborhood mixed use rules. The regulations are just not feasible for the majority of properties on Belmont. Setbacks, parking, the size and placement of the buildings, and so much more. It's just not practical for Belmont buildings. So if you want Belmont to be a ghost town, keep doing what you are doing. If you prefer to keep business alive and people employed, I suggest you drop neighborhood mixed use and restore commercial zoning to Belmont. And I could not agree more. We talk about business friendliness, and we talk about how welcoming we want to be as a city. I think that the, I think the idea of maybe a luxury, high-rise condominiums on Belmont is probably a little bit too pie in the sky. I think it's a reach to do luxury, high-rise condos on Blackstone, and I don't think we'll see them on Belmont. But I think that as an organization, I'm very critical of government. I'm always the first one to say that government doesn't work. But I also believe that the City of Fresno does work, that this is a place where you can get a meeting with your councilman, where you can get a meeting with your councilwoman, you can get a meeting with your mayor, and you can make your concerns known. And then the wheels of this city government will turn, and in most cases, I feel very comfortable saying, you can get a positive resolution to your problem. And I do feel that way. And I do think that that's something that we'll see today. And so, yes, obviously, anytime you take the country's 34th-largest city and rezone it, there are always going to be bumps in the road. And so, yes, that's what we have here on Belmont. I know that there are some hiccups in other places, too. But I also know that our professional city staff is committed to overcoming those hiccups and fixing those bumps in the road so that, in the name of business friendliness, so that folks can realize their dreams, keep their business open, maybe transfer and sell it to somebody else, and that free market can continue to create wealth unimpeded, especially unimpeded by us up here. So it's for this reason that I put an item on the agenda today, urged on by some constituents have land use consultants and others don't. And so urged on by my constituents, I was able to put this item on today. What I originally thought was what we should do, and Planning Director Clark, I don't know who wishes to come and answer questions, Mr. Zach. Dan Zach from Planning has been fantastic through this process and sat with me and sat with some of the people affected by this situation, and I think that they've got a fix. Dan, can you, oh, there you are. Can you come forward? I want to ask you a few questions so that... Now, I guess the first thing that I should probably get out of the way is to ask, you have encountered some problems in other locations, and you have a fix that you're working on for the entire city. Is that correct? And then I guess, okay, answer that, and then I'll ask you another question.
Sure. Yeah, good afternoon, Councilmember Olivier, other members of the council, Dan Zach, Assistant Director with the Development Resource Management Department. And yeah, we, as you alluded to, the changes were pretty widespread that we made and pretty large in scope. And with any undertaking like that, there's always going to be some fine-tuning that needs to happen in order to really get it right when you do such a thing. And so we've been before the council, I think, three times now with what we've been calling cleanups in order to tackle some of those things as we discover them and find ways to address them and make it work better in those areas that are having a little bit of a challenge. We've heard from some of the same folks on Belmont that you have and have been tracking those and finding ways to deal with it. Over November and December, we think we developed a good strategy to be able to move forward, and that is the heart of the next cleanup that we plan on bringing. And so we have identified similar things, and we think we have a good way to address those in a way that allows more uses and allows flexibility. those that, in a way that allows more uses and allows flexibility for everybody that's already out there, and then allows some new things to develop in a way that they can't right now with the rules as they are.
What would this fix do for Belmont?
Mm-hmm. So for Belmont in particular, it would, you know, as staff is going to craft it and propose it, it would allow a much wider range of uses than are currently allowed. And so a lot of auto-oriented uses that are already out there on the corridor, but which the mixed-use zoning currently discourages would be allowed, sometimes with, by right, without any special permit, sometimes with a conditional use permit, depending on the nature of the business. And some of the character of businesses out there right now, we're going to broaden it to allow as many of those as possible under the new zoning, too, and get back to something a little closer to like what was there before.
Okay. What would my item, what are we doing today with my item? Because you talked about the fix coming forward in a number of months, citywide. Can this vote today to adopt this text amendment begin the work to implementing that fix on Belmont today?
Frankly, the work is already underway because we share your concerns. And so we've already been working on the language and identifying the exact sections that would need to change and the exact uses that are getting hung up that we want to be able to allow, and some of the other flexibility that we want to be able to allow. And so that work is actually ongoing as we speak. And so your resolution today, if you move forward with it, could memorialize that, but we're already proceeding because...
With citywide.
Yep.
Talk to me about, because I also heard some concerns, like I said, Belmont is, you know, if you're looking for aesthetic beauty, it's probably not on Belmont Avenue. If you're a capitalist looking to get some really good deals, it could be a very beautiful place. Talk to me about the design standards on Belmont and how applying one of your solutions, one of the fixes of your department, would be a PD agreement?
Yeah.
Can you share that with us and how that can help the business owners out there?
Sure. Some of the design issues can be reconciled just because a lot of the development out there, I mean, it existed before the new code, and the buildings that might not meet the new design standards don't have to move because they're grandfathered in. But for new things that aren't grandfathered in, we have a permit in the development code that gives us the ability, case by case, to modify design standards in order to find something that, an alternative way to creating a quality project on the site that makes sense considering the surroundings. It's called Plan Development Permit. It's already in the code.
PD permit.
Yeah, PD permit, Plan Development.
This is good.
Hasn't been utilized a whole lot up to this point, but we think it's a potentially really powerful tool, and we think that's something that can really help us navigate some of those kinds of situations where maybe it's not the use that's the issue, it's some of the design standards for a new building. And so that's the, an already existing tool that we want to use to help from the design side of things.
Well, that's very encouraging to hear. Talk to me about if we were to say, oh, I want to rezone this whole area, and I set a boundary on a map, and I say, let's just rezone this whole area, how costly would that process be?
Um...
And we have to get an environmental impact report, it's going to take, what, a year? And it's going to...
It could be a little bit more of a lengthy and costly endeavor. It depends on exactly what's being proposed, but, you know, if it was to be wholesale re-envisioning, I mean, you think of like the process we went through in Southwest recently and things like that, it can get pricey if it was just rezoning the properties along Belmont, could be a little bit more manageable, but still timely, and there would be a cost associated with this. We think this gets us to the same place, but much more quickly and with much less of a disruption.
Right, more affordable.
And we can have things ready to go for people. Part of the solution's available right now, that PD permit.
Right.
And then the text amendments that we're going to bring forward gets us across the finish line, we think, and we think will be to you in March. And then we can start moving forward with projects under that revision at that point if it's approved. So it can happen pretty quickly.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Zach. I thank you, Director Clark. I think that you have been very responsive and creative, and we'll get to hear from some of the business owners, and we even have potential business owners here who are interested in putting their life savings into doing a business on Belmont. So I think to, you know, to see you here and engaged and already actually ahead of me is so encouraging. So Steve, you have a question?
Can I ask Dan a question?
Yeah.
While he's still up here.
Oh, wait, whatever she says.
We do have other councilmembers that have punched up, so I'd actually like to go in that order, if that's okay. Councilmember Oliver Baines, but before...
Wait, I'm, I'm not done yet.
Before we begin those comments, I just wanted to make a quick announcement, just if there's anyone in the audience for the 5:00 hearing, that has been removed from the agenda today. Just, I want to make sure if people are not out there expecting a 5:00 hearing today. Thank you.
Thanks, Council President, and...
Oh, wait, I'm not done yet.
Oh, you're not done?
I'm not finished with my presentation.
Okay.
I'm finished with your presentation, but I still have to bloviate for a few more moments before I can turn it back to the Council President. Thank you. And so thank you for being so responsive. Director Clark, thank you for making your staff available to me. Thank you for being creative and flexible and looking to solve problems. It just means so much to the people who are here and a lot of others who are not engaged, but they would find out soon enough when they tried to sell or lease out their place. I guess in closing, I should probably explain why I'm so sour on apartment buildings on Belmont. I think, I think the whole idea of what we talked about, if there's a guy who has a tire shop or a restaurant and then wants to do an apartment on top, that's perfect. That really works well. And I'm glad that we have mixed use so that we can offer a new way, because under the old code, they couldn't put an apartment on top of their tire shop or their restaurant or their ice cream parlor. I think that's cool. But what's different between Belmont and Blackstone, and why Blackstone is a transit quarter, besides being a big, huge street with a massive car count, the lots are 250 feet deep from the frontage of the street to the alley in the back. They're huge lots, right? 200 feet deep, some places, 250? They're big, so they can accommodate big things like theaters and shopping centers and big apartment buildings, Council President. So Blackstone has those big, deep lots. Belmont, the lots are only 50 feet deep. It's a different, it's a whole different animal on Belmont than it is on Blackstone. So Blackstone, I disagree, I don't think it's conducive to apartments, there, good people can disagree on that. But Belmont, to me, definitely isn't. So I think, I think working hard to be flexible, to be responsive, and to anticipate what people need and be responsive, I think that's a great way to get ahead of this before we do, before there are many unintended consequences. So council, let's get the Planning Department started. I thank you all very much for your attention, and I urge a yes vote.
Make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion. Steve, thank you. It's action item.
Okay, so what we're going to do right now is we're going to go out to the public. If there are people in the audience that would like to speak on this issue, you could State your name and address for the record, please.
Nathan Alonso with the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, 2331 Fresno Street, about a block and a half away. Madam President, sounds great to say that, and members of the council, we are here in support of this item today. We've been talking about business-friendly issues, and this is an issue that affects a whole lot of businesses, a whole lot of minority-owned businesses, and a whole lot of small businesses. Out of our over 1,100 members, two-thirds of those are folks that have under 10 employees, and I'm sure that most of those are categorized, or most of the businesses on Belmont are categorized as businesses that have less than 10 employees. A zoning fix and a zoning issue is something that can derail the business, something that can make it shutter its doors. A lot of these businesses don't have the resources to go out and hire a planning consultant and to navigate the complex bureaucracy that would require them to go through the zoning change process. So something like this that will help the city proactively engage in the issue and get that remedied is really important. We are happy to hear that the city's already working on this, and we hope that all of you support this item. Thank you.
Your name and address for the record.
Will do. Good afternoon, I'm Dirk Pushel, and my business address is 923 Van Ness here in Fresno. And I'm here with really two examples of property owners. One at 3012 East Belmont, Mr. Hans Paul, who recently purchased the property and started reading the zoning ordinance, and it was quite apparent that the current code was an impairment to reinvestment of the property. If you can bring your camera up, I'll show you what the property looks like today. And in contrast, Ted Fonseca, who owns ABC Body at 4533 East Belmont, has been at that location for over 45 years, and he would like to continue to reinvest in his facility. That's Mr. Fonseca's... That's the 3012 East Belmont site, owned by Mr. Hans Paul, and this is the site that's owned by Mr. Fonseca. I think these are two very classic examples of people who would like to better the community, but they're impaired by the existing zoning and designations. They're small business owners, they want to invest in Belmont Avenue, and we so appreciate the opportunity for the staff and your council to remove that impediment, because as the member of the, or the representative of the Chamber of Commerce said, it's just financially impossible for any of these small businesses to undertake these kinds of changes without support from the council and from your staff. So we look forward to working with you on the expansion of uses. We think it will be a very positive component for revitalization of Belmont Avenue, and we ask for your support as proposed by your staff in this new ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them of me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And congratulations to President Soria.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Soria, members of the council. My name is Joe Guagliardo, 5414 East Pitt, Fresno, California. I'm here this afternoon representing the Gene Webster family. This family has owned properties on Belmont for over 40 years, a variety of different uses on this, on the street. And Councilmember Olivier has really identified some of the key issues on Belmont. Specifically, the depth of the lots make it very difficult to implement some of the programs that are identified in the current development code. And I'd like to build a little bit on what Councilmember Olivier started with, and that is Belmont really is a street of opportunity. It's a place where small business people can start their first business, and as they are successful, they can move on to other locations and expand their businesses and continue to hire employees. Part of the difficulty is the uses that are allowed under the NMX, and part of it is what's allowed through the development standards of the NMX. I'd like to compliment Mr. Zach and the Planning Director on their flexibility to be able to look at alternative ways to provide means of meeting some of these requirements. We've been working through with the Development Department for about four months trying to redevelop a piece of property on Belmont. New building, it would be a used car lot, but it completely upgraded to the building. And some of the challenges that have been there are now being addressed by the Development Department and by Mr. Olivier. We would totally support the resolution that the council members brought forward, also support the activities of the Durham staff in trying to find creative ways to deal with the impediments created by the development standards in the development code. Appreciate your attention and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Come on down.
Hello, my name is Mel Erickson. I own the property on Belmont at 4235 East Belmont. I've owned the building for 42 years, and I ran an auto parts business there for many years. But we've gotten in age, I'm 84 years old, and we need to sell the property. We listed it last year with my realtor here, and we found a buyer, and everything was finalized as far as the loan and went into escrow. Everything was about to close, and my realtor decided he better check to make sure that the zoning had not been changed. And sure enough, it had been changed. And with the new zoning, I could not sell the property to this party because he could not run the business under that zoning. So we lost the sale. And in the meantime, he has been taking a lot of calls from different people, and none have qualified to go under that zoning. So we're sitting there with no, we tried to rent it, can't even rent it. So we're in that sort of a dilemma right now that we, we need to get back to a zoning that we can sell the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you also like to speak, sir? If you can state your name and the address, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Fred Williams. I am a broker-owner of All Valley Mortgage and All Valley Realty. I'm actually here for the 4235 East Belmont property. This is my uncle, and I've been helping my aunt and uncle out on this sale of the property because they're elderly. When we first listed the property, it's been over two years ago, the zoning had not been changed, at least it didn't show up changed. When we did, like he had said, once we got into escrow, everything was completed, everything was rolling forward, that was when we ran the new zoning. That's when we found out. Now, he did lose that sale. Since then, we've had other people that wanted to maybe possibly go into contract. We could not go into contract because of the zoning changes. I am familiar with the area. My dad had a car lot there in the 50s, all the way through, and I was raised there, went to Roosevelt High School, I know the area. That area is not developable as far as hotels, no one's going to move there, no one's going to go there. There's a business, like Mr. Olivier has stated, business area, and I think that we have to get back to that. This has put a big, big damper on my aunt and uncle. They have mortgage payments, they can't even afford to pay them, they can't even rent the property. So this has been a real, real bad dilemma for them. And I hope that you guys can get together and get back to the zoning change, like Mr. Olivier is proposing. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask just one brief question? So the one that fell out of escrow, that was, he wanted to fashion iron, wrought iron fencing, correct? In the...
That is correct. This company is on Cedar Avenue, near the fairgrounds. They do ornamental iron work.
Right.
And the zoning change there has put them in a dilemma to find another place to buy. And that's where they come, approached us, because the zoning change had not shown.
So when he fell out of escrow, it's okay? Mr. Zach, are you following, this would be an approved use, correct, with this fix? Yes, it would. So I guess when, and it's water under the bridge, and I apologize for the inconvenience that you've received, but when he fell out of escrow, what happened? He went, he had to go someplace else, right?
He purchased another property.
Not on Belmont?
No.
No.
I have no idea where he purchased it, but it couldn't be a mixed use.
He represents also a minority-owned business, is that correct?
Yes, that is very correct.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from... Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and we'll start off with Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Clint, I'm somewhat inclined to support, but I need definitely some more questions answered. How much of Belmont Avenue are you talking about this applying to?
Just east of Blackstone. So the whole, like, auto corridor...
Just east of Blackstone?
Yes. But just know that this, and I know that Councilmember Brando, and I know Mr. Zack, there's a citywide fix forthcoming that's going to address these issues all over the city. Tonight is just Belmont east of Blackstone.
So the text amendment that's going to come back is going to be specific to Belmont east of Blackstone?
We can specify that in the motion.
Well...
Because you'd want it to be in your district.
Well, yeah, I mean, Belmont's a really long street.
Right.
And I was curious as to, one, what are the proposed changes? What zoning changes are we talking about? It just says expanded uses. I'm not sure exactly what that means.
Okay. We, so he's, so what planning is going to do is to add all the uses back that were there before. We took them away with the development code and the general plan. So those uses that exist there today, so if I have a tire place or something, and I close or I go out of business, somebody else comes in, wants to do that, or another use that was not approved. So somebody could come in with a light industrial or a commercial or something like that into a facility that was a light industrial or a commercial. And we would say, like what happened with the gentleman's client, we would say, no, I'm sorry, it's not an approved use. We're undoing that. We're adding back, we're adding back those uses that were there, and we're doing it without having to get an E I R. and go out and rezone it. We can do this within, am I speaking correctly and accurately? We can do this within the zoning that exists. We can have this fix and add those uses back in.
What uses are we talking about that were taken away?
Please.
To clarify, the cleanup that we're proposing to bring forward soon would include a variety of fixes. Some would apply everywhere where there's mixed-use zoning. But the issues that we're seeing vary from place to place. On Blackstone, we're seeing things, but not to the degree on Belmont, for example. So we're proposing changes that would be a little more fine-tuned on Blackstone and then a little bit more extensive on Belmont. So there would be a variety. And when we present, we'll make it very clear, okay, these three changes will apply everywhere, including Belmont, Blackstone, you name it, and these further changes would only apply on this east end of Belmont. And we'll make that very clear, which is which, because the needs are different. You know, in Blackstone, there's a lot of investment going in there right now. There's B R T., there's other things. Belmont doesn't have some of those benefits, and so the needs are...
Oh, and I think that was what I was trying to get some clarity on, and thank you, Councilmember Olivier, for giving me the email readout, because I wasn't sure what uses we were expanding to. I didn't even, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how far that was going, and I know what we taking away, nor did I realize what portion of Belmont we were talking about. So, Councilmember, I'm happy to support your item today with some further explanation by yourself, and obviously, there will be a finished product that's going to come back in the form of a text amendment.
I was going to offer, if you would like, Dan can meet with you about the cleanup, if you would like more information before March.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
I'd like to meet with him, too, in case of something.
Councilmember Bendel?
Okay. Dan, I've got a couple of questions. And Clint, you might be able to answer them. I'm not sure who will be the best one to answer them. So when I was listening, Clint, and we talked about it briefly before, I was thinking that what you're really doing is adding back flexibility to the people who have businesses on Belmont. Is that, in general, is that correct?
Yes, and also not just those who have businesses and who are owners. There's owners of the buildings and there's tenants. This adds back flexibility for current and future.
Because if somebody has a business there, and they either go out of business or retire and sell that business, or want to sell the whole property, then the new owner sometimes can't continue the same type of business very limited.
Right.
Okay.
This adds back that flexibility. So an auto upholstery place can, the guy can retire and go out, and then an ornamental iron works place can come in.
Got it. Okay. So in general, I'm really about that flexibility anyways, and so I second it, and I'm very happy to support it. But I want to ask some further questions because, to me, it starts, and then when I hear about we're having a citywide fix, so I want to know really what's happening, Dan. So is this a general plan amendment or development code amendment?
It would be a text amendment to the development code. Yeah, so we wouldn't be changing the, you know, wholesale, big-picture vision in the general plan. It would really be going in there and taking that mixed-use corridor in these areas where there are these issues and adding in more uses, adding in more flexibility, but leaving the general plan...
And so, if you change enough of these things, how does this differ from the baskets that we've unwound since the general plan was passed? You know, we've done a half a dozen of these baskets of properties around town. Is this different than that, or is this...
Yeah, those were, the cleanups that we've brought to you before had two aspects to them. One were these text amendments where we went in and fine-tuned the actual zoning rules for different areas where they were in need of it. And then another, the second part was actually rezoning properties where either a property owner wanted to go back to something, you know, like there was before, and it didn't conflict with the E I R., and we could do that easily, or there was a mistake. There were a few mapping errors where the line between residential and commercial should have been here, but it got mapped there. So we need to move it back over, and we fixed some of those things, too. When we do those map changes, it's a rezone and a general plan amendment because we want the general plan land use map and the zoning map to match and be compatible and consistent. So in that part of it, there is a general plan element, too. But the heart of it is really the zoning map and the development code.
Okay. So, and I understand that, and I really like the examples that I heard from the audience today, because they make, they bring it home and make it real. So are you saying, Wilma, with the, that we're going to, in March, we're going to have a citywide fix of this same type of thing? I mean, what is that saying? Is it saying that the development code that we worked on was just ineffective, or...
If I may, Dan, sorry. I'm sorry, Brando, that's loud. I look at the general plan and the development code, and Dan, correct me or jump in. It's this living, breathing document. We learn things, things change, we need to make adjustments. It's a very large city. We hear things like we just heard this evening that we need to just fix, and so Dan's doing the cleanup to just do that, just so we can make it easier for folks to develop and do what they want to do.
Yeah, and if I could just, you know, add to that, that's exactly right. And, you know, I frankly, I'll be honest, I think it's really great that this council's been willing to fine-tune as we go along. There was a whole-scale re-envisioning of our whole planning framework over the course of the last seven or eight years, and overall, you know, definitely for the better. But when you take on something that big, there's going to be something, you know, we've all, you know, done a remodel, and, oh, we didn't get that right, we've got to, you know, fine-tune. And any big project requires that, and this body has been very willing to consider that and get this, you know, fine-tuned and working better and where it needs to be. And I think that that's great, that staff and council have been able to work together like that to make things continually better. And I wouldn't consider that any sort of indictment on the general plan and the development code. I wouldn't consider that, you know, really effective local governance, willing to be able to fine-tune and make things better.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we're doing baskets of them and individual properties kind of all over the place, I really agree with you that that's fine-tuning. When you start talking about taking a whole street and say, hey, maybe we didn't look at the street close enough, and then maybe if that street's going to end up applying to a bunch of other streets in Fresno, then it starts crossing more into, maybe we didn't get it right the first time. So I'm open to that. I definitely feel like these folks need to have those rezones and properties fixed. So I'm going to ask the city attorney, when he has a second. Doug, I was going to ask you, so you're confident, so this is not a general plan amendment?
This is not initiating a general plan amendment. If you wanted to add that, too, just to be safe, depending upon the ultimate uses that you wanted to see, you could initiate also a general plan amendment that would go along with this.
Well, that's up to Councilman Olivier.
What do you, what does professional city staff recommend? Do we have to do SEQA, or, excuse me, not SEQA, do we have to do the E I R. to do general plan amendment to enable this or enshrine this? I think it's important and rises to the level of really making this permanent.
We feel that the changes that we're contemplating right now fall within the general plan, you know, as we currently know it, and it doesn't rise to that level. However, if it did, we wouldn't have any problem in bringing, you know, a general plan amendment and a development code text amendment together simultaneously to make that happen. We don't think we're at that point. We think this fits within our framework that we've already got, but...
And I know it's, that Councilmember Brando has the floor, but just what would rise to the level of this body having to make a general plan amendment on Belmont? What would rise to that?
So right now, what we're contemplating is taking that mixed-use corridor that's identified on Belmont and adding more uses into what's allowed and adding, or utilizing a tool to add some design flexibility to it. We're not taking anything out, we're not changing. Now, if we came back and said, no, you can't, like, let's say there's a corner where there's a couple of old buildings, someone wanted to do the apartment above their restaurant, actually do some mixed use. If we went and prohibited that and actually scaled back and would not allow a sidewalk-oriented mixed-use building to go in, then I think we're rising to that level where we're changing the vision completely. We're not just adding flexibility, we're totally changing the vision. And then I think we're in that territory of a new vision and a general plan amendment.
Steve, it's yours? Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Caprioli.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of disclosures. My dad actually had a business on Belmont. He was a partner with Ed Garcia on Glen Cast Signs. I don't know if the gentleman remember that, but it was quite a while ago. And it was, Belmont is a thriving place of industry, and it was my first job. I think I was 12 years old, and I was a Saturday janitor. And I know, remember Chavez, it was not 100 years ago, I know what you're thinking. Close. And my pay was room, board, roof over my head, traditional things that you do with your dad. So I want to put that out there. And then I wanted to introduce, we have the Duke of Belmont, Member Olivier. Well, before us today, we have the Mayor of Belmont, and that's Mr. Teddy Fonseca. Raise your hand, Teddy. We want to greet the mayor there. Yes, he is, he's the owner of ABC Auto Body. It is the best body shop in Fresno with two kids, where they're always fixing their inadequate driving skills. Well, maybe I had a flaw or two myself. Anyway, I want to let everybody know that you are the mayor of Belmont, and you do a great work, and it's a pleasure to support this today for you and all your colleagues on Belmont Avenue. It's, I love it. Been going there a long time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So it looks like the screen is clear. There is a motion by Councilmember Olivier, and I believe there was a second by Councilmember Brando. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, 7-0. And that is all the business for today. Thank you so much.